Hollis Brookline Cooperative School Board Meeting to order at 6:02 PM. I am Holly Drellow-Babcock, I am the Chair. Right now, present, we have Kate Stoll, who's our Secretary, Tom Enright, who is our newly appointed School Board Member, he'll be filling in until March of 2023, and Cindy Van Conen is here, right over there, and Krista Whalen, Gina Burtscott, our Assistant Superintendent, or Superintendent Andy Corey, Patrick West and Tim Grison, our Middle School and High School Principals are here. We are expecting Tom Solon to join us, he's our Vice Chair, he should be along any minute, and Beth Williams is joining us, but she's involved with what's going on in the book. So, yeah. A process observer first, is there anyone who'd like to do that? Krista? Krista Whalen will be volunteered.
I'm on next.
What? Volunteered to be her process observer.
He's September.
Agenda adjustments, I don't have an adjustment, well, we have a couple little things, but just for me, I just want to make sure the Board knows that the Program of Studies, which is under our Principal Reports, this is an opportunity for you to weigh in on that as well and give input, so it's into place, it's there, but it's, I've been mentioning it for a couple of months, that we're gonna do that, so we'll be doing that today. And then you wanted to add a little bit more of an extended time to facilities, you feel like that's gonna take a little longer, right?
Yes, under discussion, we had a, I wanted to give it an update on what we did this summer, but then we had a visit by the Department of Education regarding building aid on Monday, and I wanted to extend that time, just so I can walk people through the proposals that we have submitted, where we're at with building aid.
Great.
How much time do you have?
I think another 10 or 15 minutes to, before we get to deliberations.
Okay, so, at this point, we'll move on to nominations, resignations, and correspondence, as I've already said, we have Tom joining us on the Board to the conclusion of the 2023 election. Now you, I think.
I just wanted to let the Board know and the community know, unfortunately, we had a family experience a tragedy today in Brookline, we had a house blow up, nobody was injured, thankfully, the family was not at home at the time. I want to let the Board know and the community know that both Community Resources and the School District are working closely together to provide whatever the family needs educationally and to support them as they go through this difficult time, but we're, you know, feel very blessed that nobody was injured in this tragic event.
Is there any?
That's it for that?
No nominations or anything like that?
Nope, we agree with that.
Great, okay. So, at this point, we're gonna approve some minutes. The first are the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School Board Minutes from July 20th, 2022. Beth and Cindy were both absent, so I have a list of amendments. Page two, line 37, replace her with you. Page five, line 16, delete this fall at the end of the sentence, as it is repetitive. Page five, line 26, replace traditional with tradition. Page seven, line 43, delete that following those. Page eight, line 12, replace teacher with teach. Page nine, line 13, replace significantly with significant. Page nine, line 47, replace and with and. Page 12, line 23, insert it following treating. Page 17, line 46, replace anticipate with anticipated. Page six, line 18, Mr. Solon should be Mr. Enright. So, I need a motion to accept as amended.
So moved.
Moved by Kate. I need a second?
Second.
Second by Tom. Okay, all those in favor? It's four, and then opposed, and then abstentions, yes. So, we've got 4:02, so Members and Conen and Enright have abstained. We also have our non-public minutes from July 20th, 2022, this was suggested by Diane, that we amend by adding the motion to appoint Tom Enright as a member of the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School Board until the conclusion of 2023 election, that should be in the minutes. I don't think it was a motion, it was an appointment, so a motion, so those minutes should be amended to say a motion was made, amended to appoint, appointment was made, thank you. So, I need a motion to accept as amended?
So moved.
Moved by Tom?
Second.
Second by Krista. And again, those present, all in favor? Four, opposed, and abstentions, two, so 4:02, motion carries. Okay, at this point, we'll move to, is it too early? Is it okay? Maybe public input should be at 6:05 now.
I can put it there, but that's what the Board likes.
Yeah, no, it's fine, it's fine. I think we can open the floor for public input, and if people show up between now and 6:45, we'll allow them the opportunity to speak, so I'm opening the floor for public input, seeing none, I'm gonna close the floor for public input, but there's a new RSA that guides, that guides us, that we have not updated our policy, but we will in Policy Committee this month, so we need to make sure that we set aside 30 minutes for the public in the beginning of the meeting, and so if they were to attend, to show up between 6:15 and 6:45, or actually between now and 6:45, we would need to give them the opportunity to be heard.
Just to clarify, it doesn't have to be at the beginning of the meeting?
I don't think, yeah, but we've set it aside at the beginning, so, and if they come in and we're in the middle of something, we can, we just have to make sure that they're heard, which is the way we've pretty much done this for many years, so, okay. We're just gonna be moving on. Principal and Athletic Reports. So, we'll start with you, Mr. West, and you can kind of give us a summary of who is going at Hollis Brookline Middle School.
Sounds good. So, today was our seventh grade orientation. During our seventh grade orientation, in our first days of school, students are introduced to different clubs, they get to know teachers and peers through team-building activities, icebreakers, attend class meetings. We had a big community meeting this morning, which was nice to have all the seventh graders in the gym together, and they go through a shortened bell schedule. They had lunch, ice cream is actually gonna be served tomorrow to both seventh and eighth graders, just as a kind of welcome back. And the first full day of school, the first official day of school is tomorrow, Thursday, September 1st. All of our extracurriculars, athletic clubs, those start tomorrow after school, and we're very excited for this upcoming school year. Today went great, the incoming seventh grade was, it was great to see them in person again, it was great to have students back in the building, because the summers can sometimes be a little dry in the building when there's no students, but this class seems like a great group, and they were all very well behaved, and it seemed like they were very excited for not only their lockers, but their Chromebooks and their devices that they now have. Our Student Open House Days, they went great, big thanks to our maintenance crews, our counselors, our front office staff, which are, we are officially now fully staffed in the front office with three Secretaries, that's made quite a difference for us. Student tours were available, there was a scavenger hunt, and it was just a great day for students and parents to come in and become familiar with the building. A lot of our eighth graders even came in, because they weren't totally using their lockers last year, so that's gonna be a transition back for the Middle School still, to get students used to using lockers again. Our HBMS, PTSA, and Booster Clubs had a table out front welcoming families, there were some snacks and some water there. We are still looking for more parents to get involved with PTSA, so if anybody is looking to get involved, please reach out to Lexi Brooks via the HBMS, PTSA Facebook. Big thank to Mike Malarky, our head of our maintenance crew, and everybody else that works with Mike here at the Middle School, they've done an outstanding job getting the building ready. There's been a big Computer Science renovation in that room, that took quite a few weeks, but it's looking great, and there's a lot of new technology that we're hopeful students will really enjoy, and Scott Turkot, the Community Science Teacher, will enjoy. We had quite a few new staff join us this year, but not only this year, but this summer. We have our new eighth grade Social Studies Teacher on Team Bartlett, his name is Kyle Morley, he's coming over from Merrimack Middle School. Adam Goldstein is taking over for Seventh Grade Science Summit, he's coming over from Hudson Middle School. We have Karen Mulligan, who spent quite a bit of time in our building last year as a sub, he's gonna be filling in for our long-term sub position for DaVinci, for Eighth Grade Science, and we were lucky to hire another paraprofessional last week, John O'Birdy, he's coming over from Nashua, Elm Street. We are currently still looking for a Technology Education Long-Term Sub, but we have filled that position right now with Mike Willett, and he will be, he'll kind of be, we're gonna be figuring things out with him, but we're gonna be covering Middle School standards in a couple of different ways. Mike has a little bit different background than the tech ed position, but we are gonna keep that position open and hopefully hire somebody either this year or at the end of next year, but we do have somebody in there. Our Athletics and Clubs, we are still looking for a boys soccer coach, a field hockey coach, chess club advisor, robotics club advisor, suite club advisor, and after-school study. Our enrollment is currently 397 students, 193 seventh grade students and 204 eighth grade students. This past Saturday, just like last year, we had the Class of 1982 come into a reunion at the Middle School, which was the old high school building, and it sounds like that was a great tour, and they really appreciated accessing the building. Just some important upcoming dates, and this isn't in my Board Report, but I think I mentioned it last spring, Jennifer McLeod, eighth grade English, she is currently one of the four finalists for Teacher of the Year. And I just want to give Jen a big shout-out and wish her all the best of luck, the DOE is coming to the building at the end of September to do a tour, to observe Jen, and talk to a few students and parents and staff members, so we're hopeful we'll be able to support Jen in winning Teacher of the Year.
That'd be awesome, that's great, thank you very much, Patrick. Does anybody have any questions? For Patrick? Now, please extend our congratulations to Jen, I mean, that's an amazing accomplishment that she's gone this far, so we're super happy for her and for our students to have her. So, are boys soccer and field hockey going on?
Yep, if I have to run tryouts tomorrow, I will, I used to play a little soccer myself, and miss getting out on the field and the court, so that is actually something that Ms. Bushman, the Athletic Director, our new Assistant Principal, talked about today, so.
So, there's a plan to try and get it started, so?
Yeah, yeah, yep. I am the worst-case scenario, so.
I doubt that, I mean, coaches are good people, that's great, so, awesome, thank you. No other questions?
Is Ally taking field hockey?
If she has to, but I think she has a plan, Jen McLeod, with our new Senior Secretary, they might do it together, I think they're planning on doing that together.
That's great.
Yeah, fingers crossed.
Fingers crossed, great. Any others? Nope? Okay, thanks a lot, Patrick?
Of course.
I think we'll move to Athletic Report first, just, I assume one of you's covering it?
Yep.
Okay, great, so let me scroll down.
Yep. So, the fall season has begun, we had first couple of games just yesterday up at the turf, the girls, actually, the girls had played the other day, the boys ended up getting rained out, but the girls' soccer is off to a great start, they are 2-0, and the boys won their first game last night, they ended up playing Sahegan as their first game, the convale game that Brian had here ended up getting rained out, but both programs are in a good place, numbers are healthy. Brian and I are also scheduling the first-ever captains workshops in the coming weeks to start the school year, so students who are identified as captains of their teams, we're gonna bring them together and provide them with some more skills and tools to help them be successful in their leadership role on their team, so I look forward to getting that off the ground. The ongoing work for the bleachers and the press box continues, there has been some groundwork laid for getting power and fiber up to the press box, with the intent of having the cameras for live streaming for our games, similar to what we have indoors, so that is currently in process. Homecoming weekend is scheduled for Friday, September 30th, and Saturday, October 1st, and we have a full schedule of games going on from Friday after school until Saturday into the evening. And as you can see, there are a handful of open coaching positions, I believe we are fully staffed at the moment for our fall season, although those are for the high school anyway, and the ones that Patrick mentioned at the Middle School, there's obviously a plan going on right now. So, I can move on to my report, unless we have questions on athletics.
Before we, I have a comment, are there any questions on the Athletic Report?
The only thing I was gonna say is that I noticed, I don't have a fall athlete, but I noticed that we did the coaches' meeting again this year, where the-
The parent.
The parent-coaches' meeting, where they had a major, a large meeting with the Athletic Department, and then broke down into smaller sessions, and I think that's great to bring that back, I mean, we haven't been able to do it because of COVID, but that was always a really effective form of communication from not just the Athletic Department, but also the Booster Club usually gets to participate in that a little bit.
Yep, 100%, I heard a lot of positive feedback about that night, both from coaches and parents, with everything you just highlighted, good to have it back in place, and then also just being able to, you know, put a name with a face with coaches and understand exactly what the program is all about, so.
And set some standards for families to understand what the standards are, so I think that's great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, any others? Nothing? Okay, so, next one, someone else is gonna talk, okay. Go ahead, it's time for Principal's Report.
Okay, so, at the high school, we had our freshman orientation today, freshman and new student orientation today, so we welcomed the class of 2026 for their, it's an early release, but first day up at the high school, I thought it went great, it was a group that I'm very familiar with, I knew them down at the Middle School, as did Ms. Flamino, who will be their Assistant Principal, and they ran through their mini-schedule today, they went to the Activities Fair, which was once again up in Lively with a full gym of upperclassmen and advisors out there, so overall, a very successful day. The summer building projects, I've been around for a little while, and I've never seen such a busy summer at the high school, we had a number of different projects, including a new HVAC, improvements to the new, to the HVAC system, paving of a right-hand egress lane out of the parking lot, a new parking lot up by the turf field, the grading in the lower lot, and a school counseling reconfiguration to accommodate for our school social worker position, and a family consumer science, much-needed family consumer science update to the kitchen stations.
So, where is the new turf field parking lot?
So, if you are driving up to the back, and there's a driveway from the old parking lot that kind of wraps around behind the scoreboard, essentially, it's behind the scoreboard.
Okay, so we must not, we walked up there to try and find it, but we didn't see it.
We went up to look the other day, we couldn't find it, we said, oh, it must not have gotten done, and it's in your report, we're like-
If you look on the bottom-left picture there, you can see the scoreboard off to the left.
Yeah, so it must just be further back, we needed to walk around.
If you walk up the driveway, yeah, because it's kind of-
We didn't walk up the driveway.
It's up by the field, I mean, it's literally by the field.
Yeah, it's closer to the field, okay, all right.
And if you're down below grade, you might not be able to see it.
We were lazy, we had already walked to the back of the parking lot, it was too much walking.
Is there any lighting on there?
Is there any lighting?
Around that? I didn't notice any last night at the soccer game, I was just curious.
I checked, there are poles right next to it.
I think it's trees. Trees.
All of them are trees?
Yeah, got a lot of trees. I just noticed some people walking along that pathway from the scoreboard coming that direction, so that may be one area we want to look at.
Yeah, and one of the things that, actually, even before the parking lot went in, we talked about the lighting from the field down to the, just the regular parking lot, there's, there were some spots we identified that could definitely use some lights, I think at evening games, I think Brian did end up renting a set of lights for some of our night football games at one point to light that area up, so certainly a valid point.
So, thank you on that, go ahead.
Yep, enrollment numbers are down a little bit, that is due to a large senior graduating class from last year, an incoming smaller group, it is just a little dip, as you heard, Patrick's numbers are up in, right around the 200 mark for the upcoming classes, so we're at 8:11, I do actually have, these numbers, these figures are as of the 23rd, so they have fluctuated a little bit with the transfers, but that's where, approximately where we'll be starting off tomorrow. The one-to-one Chromebook rollout is underway, we have a number of, we've set aside a number of days for students to come, so they can start off tomorrow with their device in hand, and I'd say we were pretty successful in getting those distributed to the majority of students. I did include the NIOSC letter, which I understand was part of the July Board Packet, but I wasn't able to be here, so I thought it might be best if you guys had questions of me to put it back on there, so that can be a discussion point afterwards if we want to talk about that, but it's the same letter that you saw last month, so. And then, just some important dates coming up, we mentioned in the Athletics Report, the homecoming dates, we have open house identified as September 15th at 6:00 PM, and that will be in-person back in the building, parents will be able to go through their child's schedule as in pre-COVID days.
And the Middle School open house is also, is there a Middle School open house also?
Yep, September 22nd.
And that's also in-person?
Yep.
And the parents will be able to go through their schedule?
Yep.
That's great, nice for the parents to be able to walk through our buildings.
Absolutely.
And meet their teachers in person.
Yep, yep.
That's great. Are there any questions so far?
No, it's a lot of work you guys got done with those buildings.
Yeah, kudos to Steve Cortez, Head of Building Maintenance Supervisor at the high school, as well as Lance Finnamore, who was over at the SAU overseeing the projects across the district, but like I said, it was a tremendous, they literally started while teachers were still there in the last PD days and wrapped up Saturday.
Is it nice and cool upstairs on the third floor?
It's pretty, it's pretty nice, yeah, so the large majority of the third floor was very comfortable over the course of the last few days, which had been pretty hot.
Yeah.
And, you know, the classrooms are quite comfortable, and, you know, there's a significant, you definitely know, you remember how hot it was when, you know, you walk into a space like, you know, the back lobby or the gym, and you realize just what an upgrade it is.
So, obviously, the back lobby and the gym are not part of, they didn't get the improvements in terms of cooling, because we replaced certain units.
Correct, yeah.
And then, how much of a difference are the first and second floors, people feeling?
I would say the second floor would be significant, I would call it significant.
Like cooler?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, much more comfortable, and the first floor as well, it is, it is an overall change in the whole building.
It does, like trickle-down.
We don't have, we haven't had 900 kids in there yet, but at the same time, it's hot is hot, I mean, it's been, it's hot in the summertime and in the, you know, the spring and the fall, school days, so a very, a very nice upgrade to the overall facility, yeah.
Great, are there any other questions about the General Report? Just in terms of NIOSC, and I'm always gonna say that wrong, because I don't visualize those letters well, and that's how I work, like, I have to see them in my brain to say them right, so that's why I can't do Gina's name right, because I can't see it in my brain, so it just doesn't work. So, anyway, so, first of all, congratulations, because it's a positive letter, and, you know, you've obviously done a lot of work, and you and Rick before you did a lot of work. I just, I got some questions from people who had seen it, and I wanted to ask you, just the final, when you mentioned the changes to the midterm and final exam protocols and the practices regarding, is that referring to, on the fourth bullet, I don't want to put you on the spot, but that's referring to the change that you made to decrease the percentage, is that coming?
That was a temporary change, only for last year, when, when asked about, I think, if I recall, when we provided information, we specified specifically the reason and the rationale for making an adjustment to the situation last year, but they chose to include that in their report as a positive.
Right, I understand, right.
But it was specific, and we are going back to what was the, what were the original percentage components to full-year and semesterized courses, so it's returning back to what was in years prior, but, and I don't know exactly what standard we included that information on, but it was an adjustment based on what we felt that was best for students, and that was just a recognition.
And they chose it, the group, this, they, the crediting body chose it as a positive, that we, that those changes were made. Okay, great, are there any other questions? Because we did talk about this last time, I just, I just figured you weren't here, and it's good that you brought it back.
I watched.
I know, you were allowed to take vacations, Tim, you're allowed, you should, watch like a couple weeks later, like, honestly, we want everyone to take time with their families too.
Thank you.
And summer vacations are good. Okay, any other questions for Tim on that? So, I don't know how we want to approach Program of Studies, Tim, did you have a thing you wanted to say first, or do you just want to listen to us?
Either or, I'm open to either format, I did work with my department chairs over the course, you know, since they returned, a couple weeks back, we had a leadership team meeting, and I asked for input, kind of programmatic, big picture, talking about, you know, what kind of vision they had. I don't have a, I have more granular type of things that aren't maybe large conceptual changes overall, which I know isn't the intent of this meeting, some course, some adjustments to some existing courses, some new course proposals and that sort of thing, which I understand is not, is not the intent of this meeting, we will need to adjust some of the language around the Latin honors with the work that we're doing in policy right now as far as enrollment.
Right.
We have some language in there that is currently in existence, that will need some changing. There have been discussions around sequencing and prerequisites in our Visual Arts Program, we've talked about expanding our wellness program, so to offer some upperclassman electives, and again, some course proposals in both English, I did talk to my staff a little bit about the idea that was discussed, I think it was the meeting I wasn't at, was the business, I know it was in the, it was a little bit in the spring, about a business program, my English department actually discussed a business writing course, which I thought was something that could supplement a little bit more of what we would consider a business course, but, or program, so we've had some discussions internally, but again, everything that I just listed, I kind of see as maybe more granular and not as big picture as I think what we were talking about.
Yeah, I mean, the intention here was the idea that we weigh in on the budget before the budget process, and we have three roles that are really important, budget, curriculum, and policy, and so before you dig in with everybody, or while you're digging in, it would be great if there's stuff that we're hearing from the community, or we have sense of, that we could give you that now, and they're suggestions, they're not like, you have to do it, they're not edicts, they're just suggestions, and then, as you, and some of them would impact budget, so that's why Krista brought up some of her things, because she wasn't sure she was gonna be able, we weren't, this meeting you weren't gonna be here for, so she mentioned some business classes, or like, I think you mentioned, well, you can repeat that, so, anyway, so this is an opportunity for the Board to just kind of say, if you could add stuff or take stuff out, what would you do, based on what you're hearing from folks, based on your own personal experiences or whatever, so I'm gonna open it up to the Board members to just jump in and give you some feedback, and again, it's not us telling you what to do, it's just suggestions. So, anyone want to start?
I can start.
Thank you.
I do like the business writing course, I think, I think that's important, I think certainly learning how to write couple letters, learning how to write, things like that are important at any age, but I still, I would like to see us look into an introduction to accounting or an introduction to business management, because I just believe those are important, again, regardless if kids go on to school and major in business, but we've had so many students go on and start their own businesses in our community, and those are two classes that I think are very important for business owners to have, and or even working in a small business, to be able to know the basics of it, and I don't know if it's in the math department, I don't know if that's in the social studies department, I'm not sure where that would be, but I just think it would be nice if we could expand our business offerings, because I do think a lot of our- think a lot of our kids are interested in that area of education.
Great, thanks Krista. Kate, Cindy, Tom? Tom, I know that this is new to you, so welcome, but you don't have to. You're good.
No, I'm good so far.
Great. Cindy maybe? No, you're good. Kate?
Well, I think I touched on this before, and I'm happy to say it again, it's, you know, for me, I look at, we have a very strong academic path for students to go to college, and I think that's fantastic. And we do have, we do have offerings for our career and tech programs, but our kids have to go out somewhere for them. And so when we have those kids that are somewhere in the middle and not quite sure what path they want to take, if they want to explore some of those career and tech options, they have to go to another school. And that takes up more time, which takes, which sort of carves their path for them. I just wish there was a way to bring more in-house so that kids could try out some of those career and tech programs in-house without it taking three class periods away from other things, so it just sort of pigeonheads them in one direction.
Mr. Solon, you're next, because Tom and Cindy have passed.
I sort of piggyback on, on what Kate just said, but possibly with another approach to it, only because from a practicality standpoint, and also to a certain degree, I'm not sure how the state funding thing works where they somewhat, they don't want duplication of the stuff going on in the C T programs, we have a center. Finding a way to make it less painful to participate in the C T programs. I think you were on that district call. And so much of it has to do with coordination of scheduling. That's such a big, big issue. I think that the push for that is going to have to come from the outside schools because the schools that host it don't have a strong incentive to address it. If we think that, if we think that it's important, maybe we identify the programs that are of most interest to our population and just pick a couple of them and, and create pressure in the schools that are offering it to align the schedules in such a way that it is not a hardship to participate. I don't know all the answers, it's a lot of moving parts to it, but there's some really good programs for both college-bound and non-college-bound students that our students are not accessing because of what they would have to give up. The second thing is, since we are keeping weighted classes for the time being, I think it's important to determine whether or not any of those classes are weighted and make sure that they're indicated as such, because I know, at least last time I had a meeting with them, that Milford was introducing weighted honors versions of many of their C T classes.
C T classes.
Yeah, thank you.
It's my turn, I just have three quick things. First thing is, not really about courses, but the program studies identifies classes that have prerequisites that involve recommendations from teachers, and then they have classes that are, have no, that don't have, they have prerequisites without recommendations from teachers. And when we go through the course selection process, I would love to make sure that that process, so the teachers open up courses for students. But if a course doesn't require a recommendation, the course should be open for students. So I'd love for you to go back to your teams and see what's actually happening in that regard. So are the recommendation, are teachers opening up classes that don't require a recommendation for all their kids, kind of thing? So that's just a logistics thing, because the, if it's a software issue, then maybe it's a software issue, but I don't know if you understand what I'm saying, but.
Let me, let me ask and see if I do. So for, let's say, a math course, if there are two or three options after this course that a student could potentially take, and one of them requires both the prerequisite and teacher recommendation, and this one in the middle doesn't require teacher recommendation, but the teacher only provides one of those options.
Right.
The one that didn't necessarily require the recommendation isn't being an offering.
Right, and it shouldn't require an override if it doesn't require teacher recommendation if the student is meeting the prereq. So, and it's just a matter of, is it the system? Is it the, is it the perceptions? Is it what's going on? And it's, obviously, you clearly know that this has probably occurred in my life, but it's happened more than once, where it's like, you have to go in and advocate for it open, to open a class that should be open to you. So, and advocacy is great, kids should learn how to advocate, but just suggesting that the process and the program of studies reflect the same, that's all.
Yeah, so there's classes that aren't appearing as options that don't require a teacher recommendation.
Right, and it's, and I don't know where the disconnect's happening, so I was hoping that, you know, this is the time to look at that and figure that out. I'm not suggesting that we add recommendations, like that we add teacher recommendations to. I think kids meet requirements and should be able to take classes. So I'm just suggesting that we look at that. In terms of program and curriculum or whatever, you know, last year we created the yearbook class, I talked about this at the time, and now we have a half semester of journalism. And I'm just going to put a plug in, we fight for STEM and we fight for everything, and I've been on this board for seven years, and we haven't really looked at the English, we haven't made a lot of changes to English, we haven't, we've added AP Science, we've added AP Physics Two, we've added AP Environmental Science, we've added AP World to History. And I think our kids in the English department, I was an English teacher, could be, you know, the journalism class could, could really build into like a, an online newspaper with editors, and it could potentially be an honors writing class. So I would just love to see us look at that. And then my other recommendation has a math, is a math thing. So statistics, we offer AP stats, but I think sometimes that's really hard, and I think statistics are really important for kids in all different areas, whether it's business, whether it's social sciences, learning how to crunch numbers and data, and it doesn't have to be AP, it could just be, you know, kids, and I, I know, we don't have the budget, we don't have the space, we don't have the people, but this was supposed to be a wish list day, so that's what I.
So a standard level statistics class?
Like a standard level statistics class, a elective, just a class on stats, you know, that you don't have to be the strongest math student, but you know, I mean, you could learn some basics. It has potential, right?
It's more important than algebra for those kids.
Well, I think it is, and it's also, yeah, and it's also, like in the social sciences, you use it all the time, too, so if you're going to be a psych major, a sociology major, an anthropology major, you're going to be looking at numbers and crunching them in a data, data format. And actually, we listened to the whole, didn't you send me something, Freakonomics, about how, yes, you did, a couple of years ago, about statistics being an important part of the SAT, too, so.
So just in response to that, and I didn't get down to the nitty-gritty, but having met with the English and Social Studies Department chairs, one of the courses that we're going to work to put together a curriculum for, for proposal would be a sports lit course, as well as that business writing course in English. And then for social studies, a handful of electives, including, let's see, American Military History, Hip-Hop Legacy and History, Chords of Memory, so a variety of humanities offerings in line with what you were talking about in the increases in other spaces. So all these would be something that we would put together a curriculum, like we did for the V E course a couple of months back.
Yeah, no.
And if you had a stats course that wasn't part of the math department, I think that would be really good.
Like a humanities, statistics?
Just, I don't, I don't care, but it, just the fact that it's not taught by a math teacher and not part of the math department sets the real tone of the importance of it and the value of it outside of it being a math exercise, because it's used in social sciences, it's used in a variety of areas, and if you're looking to expose it, expose students to the value of it, you don't call it, maybe you don't call it stats, but you, but that's what it's teaching. It's like the difference between teaching logic as a math or a computer science course or as an English course. The thought process is the same, but the modeling is different, and it appeals and applies to a broader range of students if you cover, because the kids who are in heavy-duty math get statistics as a, a part of other elements of their education.
So I think kind of what I'm going from is what Krista said about, we have a lot of students who go on to business, business majors, we have a lot of students who go on to social sciences, and the two things that I hear about from my friends whose kids are in a UNH Business or, is that accounting's a weed-out class, so that's why it would be great to have some sort of an introduction to accounting, because the kids struggle a little bit with that. And then when you take a social science, a lot of kids who become psych majors is, it's that, it's that, we all had to take that like research class, and it can be really hard, so it can be really challenging. So those kinds of exposure classes would be great. But again, I know we only have so many people, and I know we only have so much space, just throwing it out there.
Thank you.
That's what I'm hearing back from friends and relatives. Okay.
I do have one more question.
Oh, okay, go ahead, one more question.
Remember last, I think it was, it was last year that world, was it world history that they changed the bounds of it?
That was a few years ago.
Or AP?
They shrunk the years.
AP World, yeah.
Yeah. Are we constraining ourselves to the AP boundaries, or are we still teaching a full curriculum audit?
Within the AP courses?
Within our school. I don't know what we offer for world history, but do we offer one that's actually got history rather than just a peek through the keyhole?
So we do AP World and we do world history. World history, we didn't really change the curriculum. AP World, we maintained sort of what we had been doing, which gave a true picture, but changed our focus to the, to the AP, but we didn't pull it out, we just kind of shifted the focus.
So to a certain level, we're teaching in the test in that, that one?
In every AP test, AP class, you're teaching to the test?
I'm not saying that critically, I'm just saying it observationally.
Well, thanks, Tim, for your patience, for listening.
No, I appreciate you. Thank you.
I didn't even know he was a doctor.
Did I say doctor, Tim?
No, he says patients.
Oh. All right, so now we're up to discussion. This will be your twenty, do any of us have any more questions? Anybody? You have any questions, comments? No? Beth, you've joined us.
No, but I'm here.
Are you all set? Is everything, you okay? All right, thank you for your service and your time. You don't have any, do you have any comments on program of study? Because I feel like you.
I don't right now, it's my.
Okay, great, okay.
No, sorry if I spoke.
All right. Twenty twenty-four opening budget discussion stipends. Thank you. Is that Gina?
Yep.
Okay, great. I feel like we've looked at stipends a lot.
Yes, so we brought forward stipends for the last few months, cleaned them up, made sure that these stipends represent for both athletics and extracurriculars, activities where adults would be working directly with students, so not just stipends that adults would be receiving for various things, but these reflect adults working with students. So as you recall, they were part of the collective bargaining agreement years ago, they were pulled out so that we could look at them regularly, and so the intention is to review them annually and reflect if we need to remove any, add any, or shift them to a higher tier or a lesser tier based on the hours that we were looking, or that the position sort of required of the, of the adult. So we had also had a discussion at the last month around Brian's proposal to have a step table, if you will, to increase, to hope that we could incentivize retention of our coaches. And then we talked about potentially looking at that for extracurriculars. So what I would like to do is, I would like to sort of start that with our coaches to see if our goal is achieved with that for FY twenty-four, for that tiered approach to coaches, so that if you're year two, well, it was every two years. So if you are a third-year coach, then, then your stipend goes up a little bit. If you're a fifth-year coach, it goes up a little bit, et cetera. Some, it becomes a little bit more complex with some of our extracurriculars for a variety of reasons. Some of them are already built in. As you can see, we have freshman and sophomore class advisors are in tier three, and then junior class advisor bumps to tier four. The idea is that that adult stays with the class for the four years that they're with us, that the class is with us. And as you go to junior year, there are more activities, and then senior year, it's a ton of work. So those stipends change and are, you know, reflect the amount of hours that are involved in that. So I didn't think it made sense to just jump into a step approach since they're sort of built into some of them, so I kind of wanted to gather a little bit more data to see if it actually assists with it. Also, some of these stipends are there when you have a cohort, let's say, that's really interested in climbing, but if you no longer have students that are participating in climbing club, that club goes away and makes room for a club of a new interest that has come about. So, you know, sometimes these extracurricular activities are a little bit more fluid than, than the coaches and the athletic ones. So that was my recommendation.
Great, thank you. So you don't want to do, you want to, the proposal that Brian put forth would not be, we would not approve that this year, we would move into that.
You'll see that in our budgeting process.
On the budgeting process.
If you think that that's a good approach to try, then, then he has all ready to go, but it certainly impacted the budget, so that's an FY twenty-four request. You'll see it in the new items, and, you know, if we want to move forward, great, and if we, and if we don't, then we can stick with the existing stipend table.
Do you want to have discussions about that tonight, though?
We absolutely can.
Or are we just staying on?
I think we should just stick with the stipend table that we are going to, that we will be voting on tonight, and then.
Are we voting on this tonight?
Yes, it's underneath, it's number two.
It's the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, that one.
I think we should vote on it tonight because we've seen this multiple times, and then we can, as we go further with budget discussions, it can be something that you bring up in like phase one to, what do they call it again?
Round one.
Yeah, round one, the rounds, in the rounds, because it is going to be a more expensive option to do that. So I feel like it should be more in terms of the budget. I think that would be better.
So there are no changes being proposed tonight? This is just?
Are there increases, or are they?
Some of the increases were, so some of them were just clarifications, let me identify. Let's see.
I feel like you moved some things around a little bit, I think from the, for extracurricular, did you make some changes in musical director, was it like some of the?
Yeah, so we clarified some of it. So part of the difficulty, I'll be honest, is that during COVID, some of these things didn't happen, and so re-establishing this table so we could bring it back annually, from last year's information, wasn't a hundred percent accurate because it was, like I said, some of these stipends weren't awarded because we didn't do the activity last year or the year before. So, so as we moved along in the, throughout the summer and looked at all the spreadsheets, some of these became like.
Did you add this costume, fall costume, spring costume?
Yes.
Like, so you add it, because I didn't, I don't remember seeing that, because I talked about it the last time.
We talked.
Like, we needed some stuff, more stuff for the people in the plays, and then I think theater tech crew advisor, is that, has that always been? It's on tier four, twelve hundred dollars, is that something we've always done?
That.
That was there.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so one thing, it was, so like, for example, Homefront Heroes is new, it had been there, but we didn't pay it last year, the year before, just for COVID reasons. What I had said about the, the fall, the costume ones, those had been paid from an existing stipend, so that stipend was paid out for, for example, music, the musical stipend, a portion of it went to costuming. But we wanted to identify that, you know, a stipend should.
It was coming out of the director's stipend.
Yeah.
Right, I understand. I, you've just clarified where, so it was, it was coming out of the stipend and you were kind of breaking the stipend up.
Piecemealing it out, yeah.
Piecemealing it out, but now it's more defined, which makes a little bit more sense.
I have a question. It's kind of a generalized question, but maybe, because I don't need to get into the weeds of it, just clarifying, but an example. Just clarifying, but an example, under the sports, the athletic ones, is, you know, you have a sport like Spirit where you have fall and winter. So the assistant has the same recommendation for tier three. But for winter versus fall, there's actually a really significant difference for the head coach for four to six. Is that just based on hours? I assume that's.
Yep. It is based on, on hours.
So even it's, it's, I, I just use that as an example because it's the same sport, but different season. So not sure why, you know, it would be such a difference, but the assistant's the same. So just curious if, like, those kind of things were all, I assume they were all looked at.
So I'll be honest, we didn't have a specific conversation about why the assistant stayed the same and the head didn't.
It just caught my attention. And there's not a lot of examples like that. But, you know, with cross country and track, there's some similarities, but some sports are just clearly different and it's apples and oranges. But some like that caught my attention.
Yeah, so the, so the, because, I mean, you're familiar with this. Cheer in the winter covers basketball and also it's their own competition season. So it's almost like you're doing.
They do comp in fall and, so that's why I was just curious. But there may be just more hours and more commitment. But I, I just caught my attention because.
Because of the assistants. Yeah, I'll have to ask Brian that specifically.
Yeah, just, you know, make sure we don't miss that.
Will, will that question hold you up from approving it?
Nope, not at all. No, I, I think, I mean, as long as if, if they do take a look at it and there is some kind of discrepancy or they think it needs to change, they'll bring it back to us and we can make an adjustment. But that won't, that wouldn't hold me up at all. I just, I know a lot of thought and time. That's why I say I don't want to get into the weeds of it. But just that, those kind of things, just to make sure it's fair and equitable across the board.
I mean, we've looked at this quite a bit, so.
We have. I just, the more I looked at it, the more things pop up.
Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
I see that we still have bass fishing. Are we going to be keeping that? Because the question was last week was, or last month, was whether we had any enrollment because it had dropped down to three people the previous year.
My understanding is there were students who did go out. I could certainly report back and confirm that. But my understanding was there were, there were students this year who did go out.
But if it's only two or three people, I'm not sure that that is.
So I have to say, I, I did discuss that further with Brian. And I discussed it right after our last board meeting. And I can't remember what the answer was. But he had a good reason to justify that it, that he had expected the, the numbers to go up. But I absolutely agree that if we have two or three students, maybe we need to look at, looking to potentially not offer that anymore.
So that could be a potential for the budget here.
The other question I had is on the extracurriculars for the high school. Tier six, you've got the musical director for the pit. Tier eight, you have the musical director. And tier 10, you have the band director. Is this all, is this all the same person?
No. No, the musical director is.
Is that not, is that the director of the musical?
Yes.
Yes.
Right. Directs the actual play. The musical director of tier eight directs the play. The musical director in the pit directs the pit for the musical. And the band director does the band, does the.
And does all those competitions throughout the year.
Competitions, all that.
No, I understand that. Okay. I had thought that in the past, pit was part of band.
No, you know what? It was called musical director. And I said, why is this twice? And so I had to, so that's why I added for the musical, the musical director, meaning the pit. I tried to make it really clear because it seemed like we're duplicating.
Yeah, that's something you've cleaned up. You definitely changed that.
Maybe I made it more confusing, but it's.
No, you didn't make it more confusing, but I had, I had thought that kids in the band, that the pit work was considered part of that band extracurricular activity.
No, and you could be part of the pit and not part of the band.
Okay.
One more question. Why do we go tier six, tier eight, tier 10?
Because we only like even numbers.
Okay.
No, so the old, there were tier sevens and nines and they disappeared over the years. And I didn't want to rename them. And I, and I don't like odd numbers. But, but I thought there might be a time when something falls in an in-between stipend that we should leave space for it. It's like highway exits.
And I know, I think Holly asked this last, we have yearbook on there, but yearbook's a class. Are we still giving out a stipend to someone to do your?
Yeah, so the conversation that we had had here was that we wanted to ensure that students were still able to take part in it as an extracurricular. And for the purposes of ensuring that it is done as well as it can be, students who are invested in doing it and then also having a, a teacher as part of a, a teaching responsibility to ensure the quality of the product. And then also the stipend to allow for after-school extracurricular for students who, it might just not, that one class might not fit into their schedule and still opening it up for, for those students. And I actually, I actually had that conversation with some staff today about that particular topic. Journalism falls under the same exact category.
And especially now that Cathcrone's only, journalism's only one semester, which clearly I'm having a hard time with that. Because I brought up that at every meeting. But anyway, so, yeah, newspaper falls into the same category.
To, to what degree were the actual placements based on workload versus competitive pay to attract coaches or, or advisors?
So years ago, when I was a chemistry teacher, we, I, I know myself, I gathered that type of information a long time ago because I don't think it was really based on a lot of information. So I, I called districts surrounding and, and I gathered who's paying what for what. I don't think we've done that recently. But when we do check, they're, they're fairly, they're in the middle. They're not the highest paid, they're not the lowest paid in terms of our extracurriculars. But what we do do is say, what are the hours involved? And when we look to make an adjustment, it's based on the time commitment that's outside of the classroom. So I think that's probably as, as data-driven as you can get with something like this. And then I know for, for athletics, Brian was pulling together the stipend lists because when he was looking at the different models and different approaches, we're, we're not the lowest, we're a little bit higher than the meat, than the average. If you just look at schools of our size, our athletic stipends are actually on the higher end. You're not going to compete with, you know, the, the bigger schools necessarily. So it, you know, are we looking to just retain coaches? So then that's when he started thinking outside of the box and look at being able to incentivize staying with us and building a program for the long haul rather than just throwing more money as like a one-time thing, so.
Can I just clarify one point?
Sure.
So journalism is being offered as a semesterized course, both first and second semester.
Right.
So you could take both.
Can you take journalism one twice?
But it's no longer one and two.
Okay, that's fine.
But you can actually take it both semesters?
I'm gonna double check the rosters.
It's fine. No, I just, so I just, listen, I just listen. I have like English major, communication head. I just feel like a newspaper right now, in the times that we are living in, it's really important for our kids to understand media, how media works. Journalism, what's the difference between media? What's the difference between journalism? How does social media play into this? What's digital? Da-da-da-da-da-da-da-da. We have an online newspaper. We have a Hollis Brookline Rotary Online Paper. We have an, we could have a great opportunity to build an incredible, we have really smart kids who like to do this kind of stuff. And we could create something pretty special, meeting all, but as we cut down to like a half of, one, one semester of journalism, is it really creating that energy? So that's kind of where I'm, my head is, but.
No, it creates easier collaborate too.
Right. And so, and I feel like, and I feel like COVID has, has stifled everything. I just think the world needs to understand what a good news source is and how to read a good news source and know what a source is and why is a source a good source? And, and you can learn that in your, in your history class and you can learn that in your English class. But if you're writing it and you're interviewing people and you're doing that, you're going to learn it. And then you're going to go out in the world and maybe get really good at it. And that can make a difference.
How do you see that overlaying with extracurricular activity?
So I'm not solving the problem. I'm just sending out my worldview. That's what I, that's what he's really.
But what I hear you, what I hear you say, to me says, don't make it an extracurricular.
No, no, no. I think it should be, I think it should be what we're doing for yearbook. It's a class. It has that. But then we also have an extracurricular piece. So I'm a freshman. I walk in, I want to write some articles for the paper. I can do that. But maybe I'm taking journalism as a junior. So we've got a freshman who's writing things after school, contributing. We've got juniors who are maybe doing stronger pieces, more pieces. Maybe our freshmen's doing little pieces. And then we've got maybe a continuation where we've got seniors who are editors, who are making decisions, who are, and so.
Is that as, as class people or as extracurricular people?
I don't know exactly how it all would work. But yes, a combination of both, kind of like what you're looking at for yearbook. And I think it's complicated. And I'm not suggesting I know all the answers because I don't. I'm just saying there's a way that, there's got to be a way that it could be a really productive use of, of a kid's time. And I also think we have two honors classes for English and we have two AP classes. We have AP Lang and we have AP Lit. We have honors lit and we have honors lit again. We have US and Worlds, right? Honors, US and then honors world. Is it, it's the senior year, it's honors world lit. So we have those classes that are weighted in English. But why not if a kid is taking like journalism and is the editor of the features editor or whatever? You know, why couldn't it be, why couldn't that be weighted? Why couldn't we have something? Let's just build it. And it's kind of like the field of dreams. If you build it, maybe they'll come. They're there. I mean, I know these kids, they're there and they, you know, want to do stuff. And maybe after school is the photographer and the, you know, and the kids who are putting, putting the, you know, pictures up and stuff. But maybe during the class is the writers. I don't know. It's structured in a lot of different ways. The kids can get involved and then they get excited about it. And, and I know the sports editors often are just kind of auditing the class. The editors are kind of auditing the class by the time they're seniors because they've taken it already.
I think you should be the advisor.
It's another life, Tom.
Can I nominate her?
No. I know. Maybe that's what this is. It's the empty nest. Okay, whatever. Sorry. Seriously, that was way too much time. I tried to be much more brief earlier, but then you.
Much more briefer?
I didn't say briefer. I said much more.
No, I'm helping you.
Clearly, I shouldn't be teaching English. So there you go. Okay. Great. Thank you very much. Where are we now? Okay, great. Thank you. Was it just, that was the only thing, was the stipends for the budget discussion? Um, just one quickly, Andy, did.
You tree killer, you.
Cindy, did we hear back, did any, did the budget committee have anything that they wanted to send us?
We didn't really get into anything in depth. It was a pretty short meeting.
Okay.
We discussed what you guys discussed about some of this. I went through the minutes and talked to them about, like, the business class.
Like a couple of things that we had brought up.
The one, they're, you know, Darlene reads the minutes.
Okay.
Some of the other.
Okay, great. Perfect. Thank you.
And Tom's thing about the maintenance trust came up again.
Okay. And then they happened to have, since it's not on our, it's not really, we have a deliberative item about the retained fund balance. Did the budget committee weigh in on that at all? Okay. Thank you. I mean, Kelly told them she was bringing it to us. But they didn't, but they didn't weigh in or have a opinion or anything on that?
No, I think it's the same one as last year.
Okay.
Yes, I know.
But I think I'm still on time. Yes.
That's good.
Well, they actually sat through the meetings. Would you gentlemen like to go home?
Do you want to stay for this, or do you want to?
Patrick seemed pretty excited about that.
I wouldn't mind seeing the little guy.
I think he might have hurt your neck there, Patrick. That was so quick.
You guys were in on all of this, right? So you were in, so you don't really need to stay for this. And I don't think there's anything else. So, Tim, we're going to get to some policy stuff and we'll be okay without you, I think.
Whatever you need.
They're pretty easy.
I, I can stick around if.
Do you care what we do to you? I can do it for you?
I think you guys should go home. You've got the first day of school tomorrow.
Advertising.
I don't know about you, but your kids might actually want new clothes. My kid's really mad at me, so.
I'll move quick so Tim doesn't feel as bad. Enrollment policy. Do you need anything from me?
I think we're good.
Good?
I think we're good.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Day one.
To the board members, I provided you, some people affectionately call them two paperweights. I wanted you to have that because that is the submission. But let's, let's dock back a little further. In January of last year, we were informed that there was a potential for the Department of Education and the state government to come back with building aid. Building aid hasn't been around for many years. So in March, we had to submit a letter that we had interest in building aid, which we did. I sent that out. We were notified in mid-March that the application was due July 1st. So what you see is the middle school application, the high school application. There was also an application just submitted for the two schools in Brooklyn. And I mention that because I want to publicly thank Kelly Seeley for doing the accounting side of this. And then Alyssa, the new communications and compliance specialist, did all the board side of it, locating the minutes, all the pictures, everything you see in there. So, and I, I'll be honest, it would have been a struggle to get these filed without that new position. So it's a wealth of information. Basically, what we have done is at the middle school, we have submitted a proposal for $8,850,000. And at the high school, a proposal for $8,225,000. We would be eligible for 30% of both those projects.
Are they differentiating between a co-op and a non-co-op district in this program, you know?
They are not. If you go back to when Tom was on the board.
When they built the co-op, it was 40%.
Yeah. They do not. The applications are wonderful, greatly appreciated, need to be done. But I'm going to spend the brunt of the time talking off the pictures, okay? Because this is really our roadmap. Even if we didn't do anything, this is what we need to do at the co-op for the next five to 10 years. So it's, if we get building aid and the voters support building aid and we're able to move forward, fantastic. If not, everybody knows our roadmap that we'll be doing. I refer, first of all, to the upper left-hand corner, which says the department legend. The four colors. So if it's a core component, it has the light greenish. If it's an educational support, it's orange. If it's information technology, it's blue. And if it's a specialized classroom, it's green. Okay? So the first page we have, which is capital A, 111A, is actually the room we're sitting in. One of the issues that we face moving forward, if we were to do something at the middle school, is you can no longer have a corridor in the middle of an assembly place. So this is our corridor every day for kids going back and forth. All right? So if we were to make renovations, we would need to address that issue. So what we're looking at is that side of the present area would stay the learning commons. You see my feeble attempt at an arrow. That points back to the robotics room, which is right outside the doors. And I'll explain a little more as we go through of why that's there. Then the corridor would be here, a natural corridor. So there'd be doors into the common area. And on this side, we'd have two specialized classrooms. One would be project-based learning. So a wealth of opportunities for teachers to sign out the room, to use it for a variety of projects, different things of that nature. Another room in there would be green space, which is a lot of the creating of the videos and everything. You know, kind of like Holly was talking about, the media, the media portion of this.
I totally support it.
And then the, the IT component. These are not prioritized areas yet. And I'll explain more as we go along. This is more just, we took it building by building, area by area. So that is the, the first page and those spaces.
I clearly need like map reading for dummies. So the learning commons and the project.
Turn it around.
Orient yourself to the map.
No.
So the learning commons and the project-based learning, that is this room right now.
This is this room, just divided.
So we're just seeing it divided in the two.
Correct. Correct.
Just want to make sure.
You gotta walk around the posts. That's why I judge.
Exactly. To take those columns out would be monumental sums. So we'll just work around the code issues. Going to A one eleven B, we're still at the middle school. Right now, I would ask you to focus on the orange area to the left at the bottom. That's our administrative office area. The, the main concern and one of the things that I would say is priority one is we would like to do, a more secure lobby. So it'd become more like the high school. Where we would take one of the internal offices and that would be, a window would be punched through. You'd have the, what I call the bank teller window. All right? And then, uh, you see the configuration of the offices as the architect is directing them. So each of these could be part of the entire project, or each of these could be pulled out separately. They could be phased in differently. All right?
No new walls though, isn't that just?
Is it, is it, the little white walls are the walls that are coming out and the new walls are the walls that are?
The, the, you'll see the white walls, okay, are just the extensions to gain more space. So the solid white walls.
But what are these? Are these the old walls?
That is the, um, the old wall, yes.
Yeah, so those are the old walls that are coming down and they're being new to, to gain more space and reconfigure the space.
Correct.
They're not like new huge walls. They're like just dividing walls.
Correct. And again, um, I'm going to go through and explain the priority areas when we're done. And then how this leads us into the grant or the building aid potential. I'm going to flip now to A one eleven C because A one eleven C is really just a blow up of what you see on the right-hand side of that page. At A one eleven C, now I'm down, I've come in the front doors, gone through the library. I mean, gone through the lobby. I'm at the gym and I'm taking a right. So I'm heading down to all our science classrooms. All right? One of the areas that we feel that we need to look at from an educational standpoint is upgrading our middle school science so that we can further enhance what we do at high school science. So you see the four science classrooms expanded. We gain extra space because there is a teacher prep room down at the end of the building that houses a copier, a bathroom, and some countertops. That would be coming out. That is the, it's, you see, you see the T where, the T is the toilet. Okay? So that space right there.
Space here, right? So these walls come out.
Right. So that white wall is here for anybody wondering, that's what's coming out. Okay? Now, that space is very important to us. And moving across the hall, you see teachers' work, SG one in the kitchen. That is a revamping of our self-contained special ed programming. As you know, um, over the last couple of years, uh, first through all of Amy's work and then Bob and now Lauren, uh, we have worked really hard to make our programming be in-house. We're down to, I think, across the SAU, I'm going to say approximately a dozen students who get educated outside of our facilities. It's more of a cost avoidance. It's not a cost savings. So I don't want people to think that by doing this, we save money, we just avoid a more significant cost. Uh, but I believe more importantly, we deliver better services to our students. Uh, and then, uh, the health room, as you can see, uh, those walls come out and is revamped.
So are those three rooms, SG one, teacher work and, and kitchen remaining part of an in-house special education?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. They, right now, uh, this, the space was retrofitted. Uh, and it really doesn't necessarily meet the needs of the students as well as it could. Uh, and, and in some ways doesn't challenge them from a, um, a social skills development because they're not necessarily here for math, science, English, and history. That type of cookie environment, um, you know, as you know, we, a number of years back established over at Arsec, we have a space where we teach kids how to take care of an apartment. You know, they, they learn to make their bed. There's washer and dryer there, all of those things. Because those are the skills those children at twenty-one, twenty-two, when they leave us, are going to need, that are critical to them.
So right now, this space is a, is a classroom?
It's a classroom.
Like a big classroom. And so your proposal is to create a, to give the teachers the work area again? And then this SG one is a, is a small space for the kids to gather and then they're working in the kitchen? Is that, that SG one's, it's not a classroom, but it's a, it's part, it's part of the space for the kitchen?
Well, it's, it's an educational support place.
Okay.
So, uh, it's, it's not core because it's not to our foundations. But it would be where I would probably do, uh, all my pre-work. Let's say I was going to make something. That's where I would go over the recipe, what ingredients, what bowls, measuring cups, all of that.
Students will be in that room.
Students would be in that room with their instructor. They would complete that work. Maybe it's a day or two that we spend in that room. And now we're going into what I'll call the lab, which is more of the kitchen space. Okay?
Are you decreasing the amount of space available for the program because you now carved out the teacher work area? And just making it more, more adapted, but less floor space?
Well, in terms of the, the teacher work area, uh, in terms of the, uh, that piece is, don't think of it as like the, the teacher prep for every teacher in the building. Think of it more as the, the teachers that are located in that, in that room.
Is that still dedicated to the program?
Correct. The only piece that would be in there that wouldn't be dedicated to the program is the copier will go from one side of the wall to the other. And then we have a, a new health room. I, I do want to just point out while we're on this page, the, the bottom science classroom across from art, that presently is robotics for the high school. That's the room that butts into tech ed. Okay? So right now, that's our robotics educational piece. We installed the door that goes into tech ed.
That overhead door, right?
The overhead door. The earlier, way back on one eleven A, um, when I had my arrow to robotics, that was because if we were to move forward with everything, robotics would go back to the high school. Middle school robotics would move from that space down to where high school robotics is now. And we would pick up that five hundred and thirty-five square feet into the learning commons area. Okay? So there's some dominos.
So if, so if you did that, that would, would not become science?
It's not science now.
I know, but under what circumstances does that become science?
If we needed, if we, if enrollment increased and we needed another science classroom, it's always been that we would take it back.
Oh, okay.
Correct. Um, so that takes me through the, the middle school.
One question. So this is not a new health room. It's the same health room that's currently in there. It's just more open space because you've removed these walls.
Correct.
And then this space that you've removed, that was teacher's space?
Yep.
In the science classroom is, did you need that or was that the science teacher's space?
No, that was just simply copy machine, paper, that. We need that because the science rooms from a square footage, uh, slightly larger than a normal classroom because they have both the teaching component and the lab component. And, uh, as we know from an enrollment standpoint, they are limited to twenty-four. So this gets us, uh, above the standard for the science classrooms. Presently, they're slightly, either a little below or right out the science standards.
So you're taking this out and then where's that copier and all that going? It's going into here.
It's across the teacher work.
The bathroom stays in there?
I got you.
The bathroom just stays because, right. We'll probably just change the, uh, the potential door though.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Also, when you look at the science rooms, uh, this would allow us to get in a number of the modern safeties. You know, the, the showers, the eye wash stations, all of those, we have them. But this, things have evolved a lot over the last twenty years.
So this is not adding physical space? Like this is not an addition. This is a renovation of the current spaces and reutilizing current spaces for a more educationally appropriate way.
That's correct.
So the bits that are in white, like the lines in the science room, like some, looks like some of the benchwork, that stuff is coming out.
Correct. Right. And you're picking up those, that square footage.
Yeah, okay.
Okay? Now, just to stay on the middle school for a moment, uh, just from a priority standpoint, because each of these can be separate and unique entities, done together, done separately. The, the first thing to me is that main entrance security. That's, that's number one. From there, I move down to the, uh, science, health, and special ed component. Then I come back to the library commons. And then I go to the main office administration. Okay? And we're going to spend the time in each of our meetings coming up to discuss those and why, and if we agree or disagree, so we can just, uh, move forward one comprehensive plan.
Out of, out of the monetary amount for the middle school, how much of it is consumed by these renovations versus the upgrades to, to, um, physical plan?
I'd have to go through the, the actual numbers again and check on that, Tom. But my plan is to kind of almost have this on our calendar every month from now until we decide.
I'm just thinking order magnitude. Do you think it's like fifty-fifty or do you have a feel for that?
I would say it's probably sixty, forty with renovations running to sixty.
Okay.
Uh, now what's not in here, but is in the plan for the middle school, is all new boilers. All of those pieces are included in the overall plan, but you're not seeing them here. Uh, on Monday, uh, the DOE sent out three representatives, uh, to walk physically through our building. So Kelly Sealy, uh, Lance Finnamore Facilities, and I, along with three people from the DOE, took those walks. As I may have mentioned, there were seventeen total applications across the state of New Hampshire. Four of them were from us. So we have a, a potential here to potentially receive some money. Now, the other piece is, um, we get ranked, those seventeen applications will be ranked. If there isn't money for us this year, they fund the ones that they can and we move up. And everybody who joins next year falls behind whatever was left from this year. Okay? So, um, in September, in a couple of weeks, I'm going to ask kind of just from a consensus of the board, is this something we want to move forward with? Because then we'll get a placeholder. There's nothing that requires us to, to ultimately put a bond on. There's nothing that, if we get rejected by the voters and they just say we can't afford it now, we still hold our place in the queue next year. So there's a lot of advantages for us to jump in. And I want to get in early because the reality occurred that I thought may happen. With so much turnover across the state, I didn't think they'd get a lot of applications. In seventeen, when you consider the a hundred school districts, is not a wealth of applications. You know, there were probably close to thirty percent of the school districts replacing superintendents. So you had to file this with the person going out the door as the person was coming in the door. So reality just meant I didn't think it would be that effective. So again, security number one, student education number two, science, health, and special ed. Library commons, because it takes us into, um, flexible space, library media center. Just kind of moves us forward with that whole concept. And then, uh, administrative offices. Okay?
Actually, I do. So you said, uh, you, you had four. So obviously that, the other two are the elementary schools.
In, in Brooklyn.
So somehow you're, there's going to have to be a ranking here because we're not going to come out with all four.
Uh, the ranking is done by the DOE.
No, I mean, um, with our communities.
Right.
Yeah, but they're different school districts, so we'll be competing.
Okay.
Right.
We're all just going to fight each other.
Well, Hollis isn't in the mix.
Okay.
So Hollis people, potentially if they're going to support anything, will support the co-op because that's the only one that impacts them of the, of the four. But Brookline people will have to decide.
And what kind of a vote would we have to get to do a bond now?
It's a sixty percent to pass.
Not sixty-seven, sixty.
Yeah, okay.
So in the.
But to, to, if I could just answer Tom's point, I agree with you that we're a K to twelve. I've always viewed it as a K to twelve school system. So that's why I wanted to put everything out there. Then we'll prioritize and get to a number that maybe we think gets the co-op everything they need. While doing the same thing in Brookline, getting them what they need. Because two years from now, building aid opens up again and we're eligible again.
Andy, if, 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 if we get funded for multiple, but the rankings, you know, one's higher than the other. But let's say we're, we're back to back. Can we internally choose to take only partial so that there's money left for the, the next one?
The, the choices you will have, first of all, you could decide that you want to go one bond, both projects together. All right? Selfishly, I looked at this as a way to do our capital improvements plan for multiple years. Because the architect who did all this work was in for the project that we were doing this summer. So I wasn't double paying, lack of a better word. So this is all kind of in the hopes of them getting future work. So I will get more definitive answers on that because again, building aid hasn't been around for about a decade. And a number of the questions that we were asking, they were asking, we, we weren't necessarily sure of. Because there's the potential that a couple of the things done at the middle school during the last major renovation would still be within the thirty-year time period. If it's within the thirty-year time period that they got building aid for, it comes off of this proposal.
I didn't understand that one.
Yeah, I didn't get that.
Okay. You did a renovation a number of years back when you expanded the middle school. That was done when building aid was still available.
Yeah. Did we get building aid?
I believe we did for the middle school project. Okay. So that building aid from the state of New Hampshire is viewed as thirty years. You've got money for thirty years. That's how they look at it. So where we're at year twenty-five, there would be a small percentage that's prorated, that would come off of our proposal. So we have a ways to go.
So we wouldn't get all thirty percent. We would get, the way we get, they would take off.
Correct.
They take, they calculate what the thirty percent is and then they would subtract out what's left of the building and that they gave a percentage of.
And that's, it's the same as if, if somebody walked into the meeting tonight and said, hey, I really liked that idea. I'd like to pledge a half a million dollars to the project. That half a million dollars comes off the project.
Off their contribution.
Off their contribution. Okay?
Financial aid for schools.
Exactly. Yes.
So just one question about the ranking. So they are going to rank these projects, the seventeen applications that they've received, based on need, based on?
Uh, it's free and reduced lunch.
Okay.
Uh, need, um, security is big, um, ventilation.
Right. So if they feel like it, so they're deciding.
Right.
What's ranked. So we'll know as we move forward where we fall.
Right. And, and let's say, just staying on the middle school for a minute, we decided that we were only going to do security and the science wing. The architectural firm would update the proposal. That's what the request would be. We'd be eligible for thirty percent of that request. So there's nothing, there, there was like, there was no negative to jumping in. Even if nothing happens, it's a great exercise because we now have everything we need to do, even if ultimately we didn't qualify for state aid.
Okay, great. Is there, are there any more questions?
Moving over to A one twelve small A, which is our first piece of the high school. And surprise, surprise, um, this is something that's been talked about probably since the day the high school was finished. This addresses the cafeteria issue that became front and center during COVID because it does not provide the space. We hold, um, I think it's two hundred and fifty-two students is the maximum capacity of our cafeteria. Uh, but if you're in that cafeteria, when you have the tables and everything, it doesn't even feel that big. So what this does is, um, the current corridor that leads me into the cafeteria, I go by, um, the presently, the administrator's office right there on the left that we are all familiar with. And now the corridor extends. And we're putting in, we're taking the old caf. So those four blue rooms is the present cafeteria. With the kitchen. So that, that space becomes our four new classrooms. Those would be, um, focusing in, one of them would definitely be focusing in on robotics. And I'll, I'll, I'll explain why. The other three classrooms would be determined by the high school administration where they see the need. We have pretty, I'm sorry.
Where is ground level relative to this?
Let's see, I'm on the second floor.
Because there is ground level entrance to the current cafeteria, correct?
Correct. So the, at the end of the blue classroom, Tom?
Yeah.
That would be your doorway out to what is presently the patio.
Yeah.
And the dumpsters and the delivery area.
But on this side of it, is this also ground level?
No.
No.
It's probably about 20 feet, I'm guessing.
It's definitely second floor.
How about going out of the new cafeteria? Does that exit at ground level?
The, we'll take advantage of the terrain.
Yeah.
So we'll, the top of the kitchen area and that will be at ground level.
Yeah.
And then you'll go down, we will probably be looking at using the underneath area as storage.
So do we lose the ground level access to the building with this addition?
Oh, I don't think we could.
Eager.
I think it'll be there.
Well, they may have stairs now, is my point.
I don't think so. I still think you're going to be right out near the dumpsters, but just further out, the patio area. You've got an awful long way from where the ground is to the road. I could follow up on that?
The reason I'm asking is, you're going to get to it, but when you talk robotics, one of the things is, I can see you like being ground level, because you've got support for equipment, but you've got to be able to bring them in.
Right. Well, the, one of the classrooms, my proposal would be to bring the present robotics room out of the middle school and back to the high school. Because one of the things we lost a lot of is the child who has his study hall. And that's their passion, being able to go down and work, that can't happen in the middle school. Second thing is, that classroom would lend itself to the open area of the cafeteria. So when they do their work for competitions, they have to run their robots and all that, they would have the cafeteria piece.
Instead of the front lobby.
Instead of the front lobby.
Those rooms slab, unslabbed, with nothing under, no structure under them.
Those four classrooms are presently your cafeteria right now.
I know. I don't know underneath them, are they on, are they slabbed? Are they?
I think they're built on ground.
Yeah, they are too.
Because that was the real problem we had before, is that we had equipment in rooms that were not to code.
Correct.
So if we want to bring it back in, we want to bring it back into someplace that's structurally sound for it.
Got it. Yep.
Those are good questions.
Yes.
Well, the kitchen equipment is sitting in that space now.
Correct.
And that's pretty, a lot of that.
Oh, that's nothing like a mill.
Well, I mean, I know it's not as heavy, but it's, there is some heavy stuff in there already.
You can put a refrigerator in the stove on the third floor, but you can't put a CNC mill.
Right. So that, this is exactly why we're going to spend probably a few months going over this, to go through those pieces and get answers from manual architects. So that takes us to our cafeteria, which also would become another meeting space. You know, we do almost everything right now, is either the gym, the auditorium. This would give us another larger space to use at night for meetings and things.
Is that a high ceiling space or a normal ceiling?
It would be, they have, I want to say it's like 20 feet.
It's high. It's higher than that. I know some of our, yes, much smaller.
But again, I will get back on that. So that is.
So you have a new ESL room as well?
Correct.
So is that, where's the mini caf in relation to this? Is that this space here? Not the mini caf? The senior meeting room, like, what was that?
It is, it's the.
It's part of this room here.
Is it this?
It's got to be in here.
No, is it here, or is it here?
It's, I believe right now, if you look at the, this is the present entrance.
The DXCR?
Yeah.
It's this one.
That's the mini caf?
Yep.
Right. So you're going to gain, because you're kind of cutting this line here, creating this wall, you're going to gain a little space for the ESL room.
A little space, yep.
And then you're also, what's going on down here?
SG1 is another educational support space. All right?
Is that new, or is it just reconfiguring something?
Well, if we move over one more page, I think it'll, it comes clear.
Okay, sorry.
No problem.
Just jumped ahead.
No, it's all right.
I do this all the time when we have plans.
One last question here, and I'm sorry, because I'm looking through, so if you said it and I didn't understand, on this level, we do have, like, we have an administrative office, is that still?
The administrative office would ultimately be moved.
Okay.
Okay?
Where to?
I think we're getting to that.
We're getting that, okay. Just one, sorry, I'm not sure if you said it and I missed it.
The next page, which is A112B, that SG1, okay? Now we're down at the learning commons. All right? And right now, if you know the high school, you go into the learning commons, and to get to room 204, you have to take a left and a left.
You too. That's so awkward.
Whereas the architect is saying.
Make it a classroom.
Make it a classroom, that we can access from the hallway. And yes, it reduces the learning commons, but it can be the same sign-out piece that we've always had, and gives us another space. No change to the back-left corner, SG1, that stays the same. Really no change, other than we, again, are going to be reconfiguring some offices that are kind of secondary, and some of that work has already started because of what we had to do for our new social worker at the high school. We did some reconfiguration of guidance this summer. And then we keep our two offices in the learning commons. So, and then the last component.
That's just really the door.
Correct.
Really that, that only changes really just a door.
Door, and the hallway.
And a new wall.
Correct.
Like, closing the door, okay.
And then A113 is our last piece. One of the things that we have quickly outgrown is our locker rooms. And we need to kind of develop what I'm going to call team rooms. And they're not necessarily the same as the traditional locker rooms, because unfortunately, children don't tend to shower after practices, they tend to come home and use their family's house water. But we do need more spaces for students to change. We have too many athletes that change in the car, because our old locker rooms were built at a time when it was kind of the herd mentality. And the herd mentality really no longer exists, whether it's a male or a female locker room, everybody tends to, if you were going to a recently-built school or college, you're going to see much more privacy areas for the students. And it's kind of how they're growing up. So right off the back of the gym, to take advantage of space, we have Team Room B, which would abut the rear corner of the gym. And then Team Room A, which encompasses the space between the two doors in the gym. And then off the right-hand corner, we are desperate for more storage.
These are additions.
Are you maintaining, they're fantomed in there, are you maintaining the regular exit doors as they are?
Correct. Correct.
And you're, and these are addition, like, new walls?
These are new walls.
New walls, new floor, new foundation, new everything.
Correct.
Single-story or multi-story?
Single-story.
Because the gym is, there's nothing about it.
Right.
No, but these could be multi-story additions.
They could.
Right now, they're just scheduled to be single-stories.
Okay.
Okay?
One of the, I don't know if you want to think about it, but if you made a second story going all the way across all of this.
Yep.
Now you've got that full area for storage.
The goal of September, October, and kind of November, like, kind of get it shored up by November, is to, you know, kind of provide you this, walk you through this, give you the two copies, and then literally putting time in September on the agenda, October on the agenda, A to work through our priorities. Like, if you said to me, the number-one priority out of everything, it's still going to be the middle school foyer, that entranceway, because safety's first. Then if I had to go from there, I believe the high school is desperate for those four classes. They probably needed four more classes since they built it. We run somewhere between, capacity issues, 85% to 92% of our rooms are used period to period. So there's not many flexible spaces left.
We just mentioned all these new classes that I want taught, so.
Right. Exactly. Exactly.
Oh, we didn't do that much space!
That's going to be the meteor and journalism wing.
Works for me!
And again, the other piece is trying to determine what we want to submit to the DOE.
Yeah.
And what do we believe, to Tom Emrich's point, our voters can support? Because part of me knows that in the Brookline pieces, we're also talking about boilers and things like that, that schools just need, you know? So there is that balance between wants and needs. But why we wanted to do it this way, and this is kind of a credit to Kelly, is because now, everybody could change. At least people have the knowledge of what needs to be done. So between the report, it's kind of your roadmap for the next few years, and the diagrams, you kind of have both pieces of what outside people are saying need to be done. Just so you know, Tim and Patrick met with the architects, they were involved in this whole process. We didn't involve faculty at that phase, because it was more about trying to get in compliance to be eligible for building aid. And now we have time that they can actually look at this during faculty meetings and talk through, and see what it means.
So this is the thing that you've put forth to the DOE, but we can still change it. And then my other question is, if you can share, I don't know if you've had this meeting yet with Brookline, approximately how much are those two projects?
I don't recall, but the Brookline school system did a wealth of work, it approved a $1.5 billion, a million-dollar, billion, million-dollar bond this year. With that, we've gotten, we're getting two new classrooms, which are complete and done. We'll get a whole new library, an elevator, flex space, and some Americans with disabilities compliance issues will be taken care of. Their next phase is, they both need a few more classrooms. I think in the RMS, you're looking at three-classroom addition. At CSDA, would be five classrooms, because we're trying to eliminate the portables at a 20-years-old. And then they need the same infrastructure of ventilation, boilers, and those type of things. So it's costly, and I think here and there, that number will come down. Because one of the things that I think we've been successful at is putting forth something that we can get the voters' approval, and then we make progress. I mean, when we looked at the co-op budget today, this year is phase eight of co-op roofing as well. And Brookline will discuss it at their September 27th meeting. But.
I didn't see anything about incorporating renewable energy-style utilities in this. Is there, was it, what was blocking that?
When we looked at the needs, what we learned in Hollis is that we can always go to renewable energy, meaning solar panels. Solar panels would add another $750,000 to $1 million. Hollis is getting probably 80% of their, 80% to 85% of their energy through their solar panels. So there is a really good payback. But at the same time, there are some pressing needs that need to be done to take advantage of that. We would definitely be moving in the documents from oil to propane, which would be the first step. Because the propane boilers would stay no matter what we did, because we'd still need a backup. You know, even at the Hollis schools, where we're primarily a heat source air pump mechanism, you hit a certain degree, and it's very rare, but you hit a certain degree, you need a backup heating system. But I would, I would, in my little vision, I could see us losing the soccer field between the two buildings and putting in solar ring right there, and tying in both schools. The high school and middle schools are larger shoes as electricity.
Well, then we need another field.
Oh, we need another field, but we have property, Tom will tell you, outback war.
We can afford to keep the lights on 24/7 then.
24/7 field.
That's right.
So.
So what do you need from us at this point? Just more conversation and more?
I guess.
Quick approval?
What I need tonight is nothing.
Okay.
What I need, and what I'll ask for in September, like, two weeks from now.
That's right.
Is that you support us moving forward with the request for building aid. Because that's important to the DOE, to know that the board, known for well, you still have time to decide not to put it on your warrant, knowing for well that the voters may not pass it. But they just don't want to go to their state people and say, Hollis Brookline Co-op said they, they don't know if they're in yet. Because they're trying to, again, bring back a program that the state needs in building aid, and I think do it successfully.
Okay. So, Tom, go ahead.
So just to clarify, so Hollis is where they want to be, and the SAU building, which was there at one time, that's not on the table in this session?
The Hollis district had already approved their bonds to do their work, so would not be building aid-eligible.
Right.
The SAU building, we did a study of that last year, and it was determined, it really doesn't make sense to rehab that building.
Okay.
So there may be something in the back of my mind for a long-term solution that the Hollis.
But not to compete with all of this Brookline co-op stuff.
Correct. No.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Get in a new bathroom. Happy to do that.
So we'll look at this more in depth and come with all of our questions. All of our questions in September, if we have specific detailed questions.
Yes, I mean, I'd love you to come back with questions. We will provide Dawn the zip files to put in the minutes, so people who are interested.
I struggle to open the zip files, but we can talk about that offline.
And then we'll get Dawn a set of the drawings, so people, we'll post it on the website as well.
So no swimming pool, though?
No swimming pool.
I wouldn't recommend one. My past district, I can tell you, it's hard to sell. Moving forward, thank you very much. I mean, first of all, kudos to all of you, because this opened in March, they announced this in March, the building would be available, and this is what you guys put together in six months? You know, I mean, this is really a lot of work for everybody, so please extend that. Congratulations to those of you who were so involved in that, because this is a pretty incredible amount of work that was done quickly.
In addition to doing all the projects that they were doing.
Right. It's just, it's kind of, I mean, we've got cool, cooler third floors, and new build, new classrooms at RMS, and there's been so much facilities work that's been done, and it's been done fiscally, conservatively, wisely. And so this is another example of that. So I so appreciate that.
Boy, here, here. Absolutely.
All right. Any other questions or comments? No. Okay, so now we'll move to deliberations. Thank you. This is where I need my outline, so I have to read it exactly. Okay. Sorry, sorry. I lost my outline. Okay. So the business administration's recommendation for the unreserved fund balance, there's a note in your agenda? Do you want to speak to this?
Yep. Kelly Sealy provided me a memo, we got in to retain fund balance. Since the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School District continues to be without a contingency fund, we made that decision a few years ago when we went to the retained fund balance, it is her recommendation, which I fully support, that the retained fund balance for this year be set at the maximum allowed for the Hollis Brookline Cooperative. That amount would be the $188,559. And then she provided the motion. This is the same amount that we have provided in the past, which allows us to keep the tax This is the same amount that we have provided in the past, which allows us to keep the tax rate stable. It provides us the ability, if something were to go wrong, we have this fund to go to. It would require a public hearing. It would require an official board vote, so it can't be spent without that. And the state has recently amended that law to allow you to go up to 5%. That's something, you know, at the, this spring, after we're already through this year's budget, I think for this year we stay here, but then we make a decision if we want to change that, because I believe right now that's a little over 1% or about 1%.
This is a little bit over 1% and the state's allowing like 5%?
What, what's the max that we got approved at district meeting to, there's a cap on it, a self-imposed cap that we have? Do you remember what?
I think it's two or two and a half.
He's gonna say two.
I thought it was lower for the co-op than for the elementary districts.
I think the percentage is, the dollar amount is just higher because our budget is higher. But I just wanted you to know it was recently raised to five. I'm not sure we need to go to five, but I think it would be prudent to have that discussion sometime in the spring, once we're through this budget season.
Are there any questions on this? Comments?
So you said we do not have any contingencies, contingency funds?
Right.
We have, we have, what's the, what is the structure of the special education?
The special education trust can be used for unexpected expenses that come out, come about from what I'll call new items.
It's effectively a contingency, but for special education?
Correct.
And we have the maintenance trust?
Correct.
We have an, do we still have an athletic trust?
We have an athletic revolving fund. We changed that a couple of years ago.
But both of those are not for emergency so much as they're for long-term planning and savings?
Correct.
So the special education trust is more for an emergency?
No, I'm saying, I say both, the, the building and the athletic.
Athletic revolving. Oh, yeah, no, that's revolving.
So I'm just, you know, there was, there's some confusion in the, in the public about what we've got for funds, and I think there are people who forget that we don't have the contingency.
Correct.
I just wanted to make sure that, there's a lot of funds which, which were set up for housekeeping and transparency, but they, they are not for unexpected.
Right, I got you what you're saying.
And the other piece that we'll discuss as we get further into budget season, I'd like to have a discussion around the maintenance trust to get the school board's view on how they view technology. Because we're getting to the point where technology is kind of an expectation, and I just think having the ability to put that in the maintenance trust, because I'll give you the, the situation that's going to occur. Because of COVID, we were able to secure almost a half a million dollars of funding to purchase Chromebooks and computers. My concern is that in 2026, the first group of Chromebooks is going to need to be replaced, and that'll be a significant number. So rather than going that year and saying, we need this large number, call it 300,000, whatever it may be, I would rather start to look at some sort of technology or maintenance trust where we, where we know it's coming. Let's plan for it, and then we also plan that if for some reason the economy isn't good, we've already done our due diligence. So it's the same method we use for our capital improvements, everything, so we're, we're trying to keep the, the expenses for the taxpayers at least level, you know? So there's not spikes of up and down and good years and bad years.
Do we know what the total fund balance is now? And if this is funded as recommended, what would be the resulting return?
We're waiting for the audit, because that's why Kelly uses "up to," but we, we're very confident that that, this will be the amount. Are you talking, what's the total of the multiple funds together?
No. What I'm saying is, we have, we have approved at, at district meeting, funding certain warrant articles, so we're gonna take those out. We're left with an, an amount that is not encumbered. And then if we didn't fund this, all of that would go back to taxpayers.
So you're trying to figure out how much is going to happen?
So before we take the 180, whatever it is, 188 or whatever, out of it, what is the projected balance that would go back?
I, I'm gonna say, I know we met the requested amount of the co-op budget committee, and I believe we exceeded that, but I don't have that in front of me. It would have been on the last revenue and expense report that Linda presented.
Yeah. I feel like we were at around 1.2 we were returning, and...
When would that report have come out?
This would be giving us, giving back a little less than...
May or June?
I can't access it.
I can.
I can look at my agenda, but I can't do it. So someone else has to do it.
959, 754.
It was the 189 already subtracted?
Maintenance trust was 200 in there.
Retained fund balance, 189.
Oh, retained, yeah.
So, right, so the 189...
Which month are you getting it from?
So with everything funded, including this retained fund balance, we would be returning 959, 759.
Okay, so I had the number wrong, because I had it before the retained fund balance was about 1.2. And then when you take the, when you take this 188, you get to 959, so. So we're returning almost a million dollars to the taxpayers, still, while keeping a totally, like, about 1% for emergencies. And then this gets rolled into the nexters.
Correct.
Budget, right? Okay.
Now, what happens to it when it's unexpended?
When it's unexpended, it drops down to be part of the total amount. Then next year, we approve the annual meeting pieces. Kelly makes another proposal in May of what the retained fund balance should be and tells you what it would be returned to the taxpayers.
No, I'm saying, so if we retain 188...
Right.
And we don't spend it?
And we don't authorize any expenditures from it?
Yep.
Does that go back automatically?
No, we have to go through the same process we're doing right now.
So that, that comes into the calculation for the total unexpended at the end of the year?
Correct. Correct, that's, so that's why when Krista read it, it was the 959 was after the 188 would be subtracted. So if you, the 959 plus the 188 is what we...
I'm looking at it, but the 188 is, is... Projected.
It was projected.
Is it, was that, was that from the last, was that from the previous year?
That was projected by Kelly from the previous year, so that number is not changing again.
So it just, okay.
It just sort of returned, but immediately pulled back. So it's just sort of stable.
So if you don't approve this, 188, 559 gets added to the 959 or whatever the final audit says, and that all goes back to the taxpayers. If you do approve this tonight, it gets put aside, can't be touched without a public hearing and a board vote, and what we've typically been doing is recommending the same amount each year because that allows the tax rate to stay stable.
Wow.
What does it do to the budget?
Nothing. It's only the, it's kind of, the reason we agreed to get rid of the contingency fund was because this is now our emergency fund.
But it doesn't get...
It doesn't factor into the budget either way. It only affects into the tax burden because it's, it's sort of floating outside of it. It doesn't get returned, so it doesn't go to offset.
Okay. And this has been the same procedure we've used all...
Yeah, I know, I just, I remember...
I clearly don't remember. We were too focused on math.
I had a target that we were trying to get returned.
And, and do you feel like you're close to it?
I think we're low, but...
Are you, can we call the vote, though? Are we gonna be okay?
You can call it, everybody.
I'd like to call the vote. Um, so I need a motion.
Well, we don't have a motion yet.
I need somebody to, I'm sorry. I'd like to call for the motion. I'm gonna read it. To retain up to the sum of $188,559 of school fund balance from the FY 2020 school year as the end of the year available funds allow.
So moved.
Moved by, I didn't, Beth, thank you.
Sorry.
I need a second. Krista. Is there any more discussion? I feel like we've had some, but is there any more? Okay. Now I'm gonna call the vote. All in favor? 7-0, motion carries. Okay. The next item on the agenda is to see what action the board will take regarding the extracurricular and athletic stipend tables. I'm gonna have the motion. If you have any other questions, we'll do it after the motion. So I need a motion to approve the administration's recommendation for extracurricular and athletic stipends for FY 23. Moved by Tom. Second?
Second.
Good, Beth, okay. Is there any more discussion on that? Because we kind of covered it in the discussion piece, but if someone has more?
Can you just, do you happen to have a total roll-up of what we expect to spend on these stipends in total?
We'd have to do the math really quickly and add it all up.
Do we know what we've spent in the past?
I can easily get that, I mean, that's what I polled.
Order of magnitude, I just...
Honestly, I wasn't looking at the total. I was looking at individual items.
And this gets funded out, does, are we funding any of it out of the athletic?
Not, not for physicians. We're using the athletic trust for equipment and uniforms and things of that nature.
The athletic revolving fund.
Exactly, thank you.
Have you, have we budgeted at the level that we are proposing?
I would say for the, pretty much, yeah, for everything I've gone over, yes.
Okay.
Occasionally what will happen is, you know, a principal might make a request during the year.
No, but I mean, what we're proposing isn't out of line with what was budgeted.
Oh, no, no, no.
And won't substantially raise the budget for next year?
Right.
Correct, yep.
So, any other questions? All in favor? 7-0, motion carries. Okay. Next, we have policy GBCD, criminal history records. I need a motion to, why are there... I need a motion to accept the third reading and adopt policy GBCD, criminal history records check, background investigation.
So moved.
Moved by Beth, second?
Second.
Second by Krista. They're racing. It's Kate versus Krista. Who will do first?
Guys, gotta get kids to school.
Okay, um, so can someone speak to G, I hate the letters, GBCD, just where we are on that? I mean, I don't think we had any changes in policy, right?
So although I wasn't at the last meeting, there are no changes from second reading?
Right.
I couldn't, I, I think you did change that, something about the, you, you referenced in agreement with board policy instead of as approved by the board, because that was the question that we had, and I don't, I don't see that that language is still there.
So I wasn't at the meeting, Holly?
No, I'm sorry. I wasn't at the meeting.
Yeah, we did.
So we did make that change, but it was...
Couldn't find my policy folder today, so...
Yeah, I don't, I didn't bring my policy folder with me.
I didn't need to bring it, I'm sorry.
But we, we did make the change that was recommended, and, but it was a simple change, so...
Substituted, yeah.
Right, we did make that change, and that's why we said third reading and adopt, because it wasn't...
That's where you adopt.
Yeah, right, exactly. So, did we change?
Where's Steve when you need him, huh, Tom?
What's that?
Where's Steve when you need him?
Okay, are we set, are we ready to move forward on that one? Okay, so all in favor? So, yeah.
I, I don't know.
Do you want to abstain from that? Like, yeah?
Probably should, I really have no idea.
Okay, so 6, 0, 1. Tom Enright abstaining.
6, 0, 1.
6, 0, 1, great, okay. So, next one. So we need to, I think it's, the next one is, I'm sorry, I'm advertising in schools. I need two things in front of me, it's just, so I need a motion to accept third reading and adopt policy KHB, advertising in schools.
So moved.
Moved by Beth. Second by Tom. So we didn't make any changes to this. We discussed how it will play out, and we are seri, so the next phase for this advertising in schools policy, it'll be in the books, it'll be adopted, and then the next piece is for the administration, and I don't know who takes that on, with the principals, to work on a procedure for requests that, you know, people would make, not for advertising, but for sponsoring or helping in some way and supporting the schools. And in that procedure, it'll be clear that the language of a banner would say, "Thank you to Mike Systems for your support of schools." So does that, that works for everyone? So that, but that's gonna go in the procedures, it's not in the policy?
Do we get to review the procedures? I know we don't own them, but...
Um, I think out of just respect for us...
That's what you'd like to do?
Yeah.
We're happy.
Yeah, so, once the procedures are done, yeah, okay. So, and those, we could, like, with everything that's going on, it's great, it would be great to have some of those done. Okay, and I don't know who, that's the superintendent's call.
Yep.
All right, so all those in favor of third and adopt? So we're at 6, 0, 1 again. Tom Enright abstaining, that motion carries.
How do you know he didn't object?
He didn't, well, he didn't raise his hand either.
Okay, yes?
He looked like he was...
Nays? Abstentions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Enright.
At this point, I'm sort of tuned out, don't know what you have to say.
You're good, you're good. Okay, the, the next policy is JF. We also are moving this to third read and adopt, so this is, I need a motion to accept third read and adopt of policy JF, enrollment policy.
So moved.
Moved by Beth, second by...
Second.
Cindy, swooping in. Okay, so, we did say Tim, told Tim we had this. We didn't make any changes, right? Did we?
It doesn't, uh...
Not since, you didn't make any since the last one.
No changes since the last one, so this is the same.
Back to board for third.
Great, so all those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so, again, Mr. Enright abstains, and we're at 6, 0, 1, motion carries. All right. Next one is, I need to have a motion to accept for third reading and adopt policy IMBC, alternative credit options.
So moved.
Moved by Beth, second by Kate. Okay.
You're very verbal.
So, again, no changes, right?
I have no changes in my notes.
You have no changes? We made no changes. These are, these have been worked on by a leadership team at the high school, and they're really, we've talked about them a lot, so. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Mr. Enright, 6, 0, 1, okay. All right, so the next one is not, oh, we're doing this, okay. So, the next one is board policy BBBE, unexpired term fulfillment. We need a motion to accept for second reading, waive third, and adopt policy BBBE, unexpired term fulfillment.
So moved.
Moved by Beth.
Second.
Second by Kate. Just in case the public is listening, this is, the only change we made was to just say that we would do as the RSA indicates in fulfilling a, filling a vacancy. So, are there any questions on that? We didn't make any changes to that? That's what we did, so all those in favor? Any opposed? And abstentions? Okay, 6, 0, 1, motion carries. And finally, this one is our, is our first reading, right? So I need a motion to take from the table, because we tabled it last month, the policy JLCJA, because it has to have as many initials as possible, emergency plan for sports-related injuries and additional protocols for athletics participation.
What has changed that makes us want to take it from the table?
The person who really has managed it and has, really can speak to it is present and was not present last month. So all those in favor of taking it from the table? I mean, sorry, I need a motion first. Moved by Beth. Second by Krista. I don't know why, I write this down as if I'm actually gonna give it to anybody. Dawn pays attention, okay. All those in favor of taking it from the table? 7-0, great, all right. So now we need to make a motion to accept the first reading of policy JLCJA, emergency plan for sports-related injuries and additional protocols for athletics participation as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Beth. Second by Kate. And at this point now, Beth can present on the policy.
Beth will try her best. She did not get her policy book from home. She came straight here, so, um, this, you know, and I know Gina and Holly can, you guys can chime in too, but this is a brand-new, required by law. Initially, you know, we, we took a lot of what the state recommended because it is Initially, you know, we, we took a lot of what the state recommended, because it is straight out of RSA. So much of this, even things I questioned in some of the medical sections are straight out of the RSA, so it's really not something that we can change. Initially, the date on this was for in August to be adopted by, but they have pushed back for the procedures and everything until next school year, so we thought that this was all gonna be going into effect this school year, hence why we're trying to get it on here quick, and then we had to table. So right now, the procedures for this are really, like, coming along very beautifully, but because they don't have to be in place immediately, now they're taking a pause and kind of re-looking at everything for the procedures, but making sure they're aligned and everything. But, like I said, most of this is really straight out of RSA, so if you have questions or concerns, I know it's the first time maybe everybody's seen it, but you'll see it again, yeah.
Just to clarify, this policy isn't the procedures, it's the policy that guides the creation of a plan, what should be in the plan, what protocols and procedures are required, and, and the annual review of that and all of that, so.
Correct, and because of the timeframe, it was kind of, really quite the process. Once you look into this and the procedures that are gonna be required for this is huge. And because of the timeline, you know, our staff did a phenomenal job. This has been administration, this has been athletics, this has been school nurse, I mean, everybody, there's been a lot of hands in this, and it's coming along beautifully, but now they have the time to kind of back off and make sure that it is aligned with everything. But sitting in on the procedure-building meetings too and seeing that, they've been doing a beautiful job aligning to this, but this will give guidance so that they can go from there and get that ready for next school year.
So the, the policy is directly from RSA, and-
Of that majority, yeah.
The plan, we will eventually see the plan. One thing to point out that we did talk about in the policy meeting, I think after you left, is that there's no approval from the board of the plan.
Correct.
The board would approve the policy, and then we would get an update on the plan and procedures. That's how the RSA works, however, we can always add that we want it to be approved by the board, so that's something we could talk about and, and add in, and if, if that was something that you wanted us to take back to policy, we could do that. That's the only question I think we had for the board, is if you want to, if you feel like you want to approve the initial plan, or if you're okay with just getting a review of it, and it's supposed to be reviewed every year, which should then be, you know, kind of put on an agenda. It says later than the start of each school year, so.
The way that it's currently structured, who is responsible for the plan?
Superintendent, or there doesn't need-
The superintendent, right on the top.
It's the superintendent ultimately, yeah.
Yep.
Athletic director, and, so it's not, not by themselves?
And just to, you know, to give a little bit more depth to the procedures to this, this is, the plans that this expresses in here is for every playing area. So if you have an injury in the gym at the high school, or on the soccer field down here, the plan includes everything for each situation. Where's the closest AED? What do you do? So some things are the same for all plans, in terms of calling nine-one-one, certain things, but some are, are different, so they've had to go to every single scenario. So it's, it's very extensive, the procedures are really, really big, but it, it follows suit with all of this.
And it's for, specifically for our spaces, right? So it doesn't, we don't have to have a plan for, like, Crotchet Mountain, or for the tennis courts we use over in Nashua. Those plans are put in by those institutions.
Correct, that's our understanding.
Do, do you know, on, on, second page, item two, it says student medical history. Such information must include, does, is it going to require that any student who participates have this information?
Correct, yes, and I, you know, just to give example from this, you know, I, I can nitpick this from my background, you know, D, there's a sickle cell treat, there's so many other things, blood clotting, this is straight from the law, this is straight from RSA, so yes, this is guided by RSA. They need to have that on record.
But does, does-
We could add to it, we can't take away from it.
But can the, can the plan allow for the entry being not provided?
You mean if the students don't have this, they can't participate?
I mean, can, can you, can it, can the plan allow a student who doesn't have this information participate?
I don't believe so, not by the way it's written in by RSA, like I said, I-
Because some of these things that they're talking about, nobody gets tested for on a regular basis.
No, not tested, no, it's, it's not necessarily testing, it's screening for such things, so if there's a known history, so. But I can certainly take that back and, and look at that, but-
They have to have a doctor's, a physical.
But many of the, but normal physicals don't screen for a lot of these things.
And we actually talked about this too, pretty extensively, because, so, yeah, and just to give you, you know, one, one of my solutions is that we require a district-level form, some do, I, I, you know, kids that I clear for sports, there's a couple of area high schools where I have to do their form, or else the school refuses to accept it. We've never done that, we've really allowed for anything, but I think that you'll see this trickle back to primary care and urgent care, but right now, I can tell you, no, not all these things are screened or, and it's, it's not necessarily testing for, it's asking if there's a history for the student. So it's not to guarantee that these things are not, I mean, a student could have asthma, and we don't know it, and the provider doesn't know it, but have they been screened, have they been cleared?
Okay.
But I think that, to me, is, to me, that is the most surefire way to be in compliance with the law, is that we require our own form, and it has on there, have you screened this patient for these potential issues?
And I'm, I'm finally asking the question of have you screened, but I have concerns if, if it says, if you haven't been screened for this, you can't participate, that's, that's a concern.
It sounds like it's asking for medical information, so it's really whatever the, the information that the doctor would choose to give you, right? Like, whether or not they have a history of this, it's not necessarily even, asking for screening.
It does say must include.
Must include.
I would caution, because it says it must include, and I can tell you, like, a lot of these things, like I said, I'm familiar with my forms and local forms, and a lot of the forms have most all these, but they don't have one or two on there.
Right.
So I think that's to me, and I know, there's pros and cons to requiring our own paperwork, but if we're gonna be compliant and make it as simple as possible for our nurses, for athletics, and to cover us and to feel confident in that, I think that we use our own form and require, and it, yes, it will, it's a growing, it's, it's gonna, we're gonna have parents that are frustrated, say, oh, I didn't know I need to, but we put it online, we make it as accessible as possible, you can print it from the doctor's office. I, I, I think that's the way to go, but again, that's a procedural thing, that's, you know, so we've talked about it, but we didn't really address it too much in policy, because that will be, you know, determined in procedures.
And we can't change, like, this is what the law wants us to get.
I understand that, I'm trying to understand what it, what it's asking.
And I would even, you know, I, but I, I asked too, you know, I mean, I asked other medical professionals when it talks about in the first line, face, head, or cervical spine issues, I'm concerned about their whole spine, if they've had any other spine issue. So we could always add to it, but we can't take away, it's same with a sickle cell, that's a very specific, blood clotting, there are so many others we should be concerned about too. We could add to it, but we can't take away, but this is literally, that entire section is straight out of the RSA.
Does this only apply to extracurricular sports?
Well, that was the other question.
We did.
Just defining sports-related injuries, and then it says, and protocols for athletic participation, so is this physical education class? Is this, is it extracurricular? Well, that's gonna be part of our plan, we have to determine, but this is required of all schools. I believe it's grades four and up, so it'll be required of our elevens, even though we don't offer sports.
And how about for people who are renting our field?
These are student athletes, they're students, so I-
They're not our responsibility because it's our facility?
That's what, that's what we had discussed, and that was our assumption.
So this is for first read, is there anything we can take specifically back to the policy committee regarding the, my questions?
I do like your, I, I like your request, I think the, the board should have approval of the plan.
Do you think, regular approval, or approval of the initial plan, and then updates every year?
As a-
Because it's-
I think initially, it's very, to me, it's really important, I mean, I've seen it, and I feel very confident in what they're doing, but I think initially, this is a really big, I mean, this is like, this is a really big document. I don't know if it's annually required, and, and we are very fortunate now to have a little more time on our hands, because this was supposed to be right now.
So-
At a minimum, the initial plan, but, but, I mean-
I would suggest the initial plan and then build in a review cycle, I'm not saying every year, but maybe every two years or whatever we build in.
How often, and it has to be reviewed annually?
It has to be reviewed annually, but like, a nouveau every, okay. So we can take it back to policy and talk about that, if, if you feel like, what I'm sensing is that we want some sort of an approval process for, in there, from the board.
What I was gonna say is that, that they should review changes.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So if you review it and you don't make changes, but if you're making a change-
Right, changes perhaps, like, significant changes or something, because like, if you just change, like, where the location of the AED is, because that's gonna be in the plan, that's not, but I get what you're saying. We'll talk about it in policy.
Yeah, pick a word, pick a word that you like.
Well, I get what you're saying, though, because that wouldn't change the-
I'm not looking for correcting a typo, or the-
Right, you know, I'll think about that.
So all those in favor of this for first read? Seven, zero, okay, so that motion passes. At this point, I'm gonna take a report out from the process-
Can I do that?
Oh, sorry.
This is not on the agenda, but it's something that I had talked with a couple people about. We have this new requirement of the thirty-minute public input session. And having seen what's transpired in some, in some boards where they become contentious, and there is, is a desire for the board to respond, but appropriately, we don't respond in our public input, we take it as input. I would be interested in finding out if there is an appropriate and legal way for us to add an element, just a standard element in our, in our agenda, discussion of public input, so that we do have the opportunity, real time, to, as a board-
Respond.
Hear it and respond, without having to get into a, a back and forth during the public input.
And that would go under the discussion section?
Wherever it's most appropriate, but the idea being that, you know, if people get up there and they, they make claims, and we appropriately listen to it, but we know darn well that what they're saying is either misinformation, or, or is not accurately representing it, or, or conversely, they are providing input that we feel is very important, but we, again, have to keep silent on, we, I'd like to see an opportunity for us to react and respond.
So you want to see if there's a way to do that, okay, that sounds good. And also, we should note the policy committee that we need to bring that policy back, that we just approved in October twenty-twenty-one. We're just gonna bring it back. So I forget what, is it BB, BDEH?
BDEH.
Okay, so you'll probably see that next month. A report out from the process observer?
We did, well, I mean, we're a little bit over, thirteen minutes over the report, but the information we received today was, I think, fantastic, getting all this information about the renovations. We had good discussion on the policies, we passed a bunch of policies. Woohoo! I think we did a good job, a little bit over, but not, but stayed to the agenda for the most part, well done.
You're so welcome, and, and thanks to our newest and most senior board member. By senior, I mean the-
Are you calling him old?
No, I was gonna say, by senior, I mean the, the person with the most experience.
Yes, he does.
Okay, so at this point, we're gonna go, move to, I need a motion that we, the board, by roll call, go into non-public session.
We do have non-public.
Pursue it to RSA ninety-one, A, colon, three, two, is it C?
It is, nope. It is L?
Oh, gosh, well, I don't have L in front of me.
L, consideration of legal advice provided by legal counsel, either in writing or orally, to one or more members of the public body, even where legal counsel is not present.
And F.
And F, which is, I don't have an F.
Not on there.
Is that something new?
Yes, the, this-
For fun.
Emergency. Considerations of matters relating to the preparation for and the carrying out of emergency functions.
I have that as I.
Okay, well, it's, he has F, you have I, I, okay.
And what is it? So moved.
So L and I.
Carrying out of emergency functions.
Moved by Beth, second by Tom. Okay, I need a roll call vote, there's no discussion on this, all roll call vote, please, starting with Kate.
Kate, aye.
Beth, aye.
Tom, aye.
Holly, aye.
Krista, aye.
Tom, aye.
Cindy, aye.
Great, so we are now in non-public at-